Yeah. Okay. Yeah, all right. Come on. It's just, uh. We're talking about. Yeah. I'm here. I'm here. Yeah. Come on, come on. I'm not even down. Nobody's. I'm out. I'm out. All right. You know. Come on, come on. I'm not even down. Nobody's. I'm out. 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 I don't know next summer. I get to you. I'll pull you over. You don't need to. I'm out. I'm out. Yes, you're right. More movement. More power. I'm out. 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 Last week, I think, last week, I think I was in the. Here's how we do it. Here's how we do it. Here's how we do it. If it's out, here's how we keep it back together. Uh, you know. But. They got. We're near. We're near. We're near. Have you been? Have you been? Have you been? You know. I'm doing. 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 I'm going to. I'm going. 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 How are you? Good. How are you? You're working hard for the money today?
Yeah.
We just had a ribbon cutting on our news headquarters, our P D L. So, all school board, the council, some of the council, some other areas are out there. We had to go to the core M T O and we were, um, going through all the words we can't say anymore, right? So, instead of equity, I came up with great deals for all, resilience, bounce back bigger. Um, environmental justice is nature creature. What I would do for, um, my folks in solution. That. I have to. 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 I have to.
Not fifty days.
Yesterday.
That wasn't a good year.
It's cold in my work.
You said the person said that. Oh. Just stuff off.
See, Mark's out. Come on. This is the meat locker on the weekends. This is it.
You find that. Now you have this one. According to what you've seen, this isn't it.
All right. You always gotta get the right.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. We're gonna go ahead and, uh, get to pushing. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Uh, today is Thursday, August twenty eighth, twelve P M. Uh, we'll have Alderman curse for tea, lead us in open prayer.
Thank you, if you would, join me in prayer. God, our creator, we come to you today with open minds and loving hearts. We seek your wisdom and guidance as we carry forth the vision of our community. Lord, we know that where there is no vision, the people perish. Open our eyes so that we see clearly your vision for your people. Heavenly Father, we ask for your comfort for those who are hurting from gun violence in our community, especially our young adults, our juveniles, our children. We ask for blessings for those who suffer from poverty and lack of a stable home or income. And we ask for help for those that are suffering from addiction and from mental illness. Lord, we know that that wraps our community a lot. Lord, in this world full of distraction, violence, and anger, we are reminded to be still and know that you are God. May we go forth, living to love and loving to serve, in the name of God, the Creator, Christ the Redeemer, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you all very much.
We offer a moment of silence for the young people lost in mind. So, I'm gonna do it out there. Okay. That's good.
Um, and thank you for that. I was actually in Minnesota, a minute after this yesterday, uh, when all of this was kind of jumping off and I could tell you that was, um, nerve wracking, to say the least, uh, to have that, that level of violence to occur, particularly with those young people. So, uh, so on our workshop agenda, we have a, um, vision zero update. Uh, do we need an exact session today? Attorney says no.
No sir.
No clerk says?
No sir.
No, okay. So, it's just vision zero and, uh, any updates that you want to give us. So, Mr. Manager, it's on you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Council. Great to be here, uh, in a workshop today, uh, and back in our media room. Um, we're gonna discuss today, um, updates from our Vision Zero program, uh, to include, um, traffic calming as well as a report from Captain Beto and the Police Department on, uh, trends that we're seeing in serious industry, um, injury and fatality as relates to, um, traffic related, um, incidents. So, uh, with that, I wanna, um, bring up our Chief of Planning and Economic Development, uh, Faye De Massimo, um, who will also bring with her, her team, um, uh, Stephen Henry, uh, Harold Taylor, and of course, we'll also hear from Captain Beto, as I said. So, with that, um, Faye?
Thank you, City Manager and Mayor, Council. We are really delighted to be here today and to offer you this really important presentation. This is arguably, safety is always number one, it's most important focus of everything we do. Um, and that's particularly so, of course, in transportation within our partners and, uh, the Police Department. One of the things you're gonna hear in the presentation today that we're also very proud of is we know that you like to hear from us, um, and we love to give you information, but we also think it's important for you to hear from the residents whose lives are being changed and neighborhoods are being changed by these important investments that are made possible by your leadership, um, and the, um, investments that we are continuing to make in the community. So, with that, I'm gonna, um, ask Steve Henry, our Senior Director of Transportation, uh, to come forward and begin our presentation. Thank you.
Uh, good afternoon. Uh, welcome. Uh, we're excited to be here today, talk about this important, uh, initiative. Um, I just wanna echo, uh, Faye's comments. We really appreciate the support and the guidance, uh, City Manager, uh, Mayor and Alderman have provided, uh, on this process. I, I won't take up much time, but I do wanna introduce Harold Taylor Junior, who has done an outstanding job, is taking the lead on our Vision Zero initiative as our Vision Zero Coordinator, uh, for the city of Savannah. Harold?
Good afternoon. Thank you so much, Steve. Thank you so much, Chief, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Thank you all once again for your continued support. Make sure this presentation is queued up and ready to go. So, today, we're here to talk about the Vision Zero updates. Um, I can definitely go on and on about some of the great things that we've been doing, but just for the sake of time, I just wanna kind of zero it in on a couple of different things, uh, that we wanna focus on today. So, once again, thank you all for your continued support. Because of you all, we are continually able to promote safer streets, promote safe speeds, keep our people safe, create safer vehicle mobility, and also for cyclists, and in totality, keep our pedestrians safe as well. So, this is a quick recap of Vision Zero. So, we know the main three things of Vision Zero is to eliminate all serious injuries and fatalities related to traffic, also creating safer streets for all road users, and increasing equity and accessibility for all of our transportation modes. So, today's presentation is gonna focus on six E's. Most of you may remember this from our last presentation, but these six E's are very important to us because they are equally important. So, there's no particular order here. So, equity, enforcement, engagement, engineering, emergency response, and evaluation are some of the topics that we're gonna focus on today. So, starting out with equity, I'm very, very proud to announce that we, uh, currently have traffic calming and across all districts, represented taste, representation across all districts, making sure that we keep our residents safe on our residential streets, and we have a lot of great things that we're speaking to in the presentation a little bit further to show you the progress that we've been making so far. So, starting out with traffic calm is something that I wanna share. This is all still in beta testing mode, but this is the first time that Council, we're presenting to you first. Your eyes are fresh on this, and this is something that we're proud of, and we wanna get some feedback. And so, if I can click over, see if I get my mouse to work here. This is a portal that we created, like I say, still in beta mode, but this shows all current, current, um, tra- traffic calming locations and also temporaries. Just wanna show that to you here really quickly. So, with this map here, and I'll make sure that everyone gets a copy of this, so in that way, you can take a cruise around this map and be able to see exactly what the great work that we're doing. So, if you look here closely, this shows roughly about a hundred odd locations where we place traffic calming across all districts currently. This map also includes temporary locations, so this map will be forever changing. That's what we wanted to create is something that's more interactive, show you real time information. And so, just for a quick, uh, just example, if we come in here and click on this particular area, you can click in and see exactly when this table was placed, location of the table, and then also some more modifiers and information that we feel is those important. Now, of course, we're planning to go public with this, uh, in about a month or so, and then this map will also include, based off of feedback that we get from you all, Council, uh, other additions that we can make. These lines that you see here show our speed limit reduction areas. Of course, this does not cover the whole city. We're still adding them in currently. Like I say, this is still in beta test mode, but this also shows areas where we reduce speed limits and also notates those speed limited changes and additions as well. So, like I say, very, very proud of this and, uh, definitely open and welcoming any feedback that we can get, so then that way, we can continue doing great work in our residential areas and amongst our collectors and other major roadways. Get back to our presentation here. So, along with our traffic calming program, we have been moving steadily along, and so, of course, I can stand up here. Many of us from transportation services can stand up here and talk about all of the great things that comes with traffic calming in many modes of different forms, but we felt as though it would probably be better if you heard it exactly from the residents, those that we serve. So, please take a quick look, very short video that we wanna share with you, very proud of this.
Out here. Um, they do slow down. At the community association meetings, people say, well, yes, we actually needed those speed tables and, you know, they're glad that they're, that they're there.
It was actually pretty simple. It just contacted the city, and then from there, I filled out a form, and then they came out and assessed the situation and then scheduled the speed hump to be, uh, installed. And people started slowing down pretty drastically. I think people are happy to have them. People aren't, don't like as much traffic coming through and how aggressive a lot of the drivers are here. So, it's definitely calmed things down, so I think it's a very positive response.
Cars would be coming back, and they had no respect for even the children. The speed limit was twenty-five mile per hour. They wouldn't slow down for the children, and that got to, something needed to be done, and I am so grateful that you saw that and that you act on it as quickly as you could and brought us to where we are now. I just thank God for, change has come, and I'm just grateful, so grateful.
So, yeah, that again, uh, just very, very proud of the positive impact that, uh, traffic calming has made, like I say, on our various residential streets. A full circle moment for me, talking to many of these residents, started out in the beginning processes with them. It just a quick synopsis in this next slide of just kind of what we've done over the years. Uh, that's not, it's not noted in this, but just thinking about before even twenty twenty-two, what you see there was a slight, a huge increase, uh, in twenty twenty-three, and we're steadily keeping things going even till now, but before twenty twenty-two, we only had nineteen total traffic calming installations. That's spanning from about nineteen, twenty nineteen until twenty twenty or so, and though, of course, COVID had some impacts, but as you see of now, twenty twenty-five, that's only of this month. We're projected to do a lot more, and thanks to this Council, thanks to the City Manager, and even thanks to the residents, we're resourced to do more. We just, uh, ordered an extra set of tables, and in that way, we can deploy more, uh, at the same time, and so, we're very, very proud of that. So, you will continue to see these numbers rise.
Harold, can I just interject to underscore that? Previous to the twenty twenty-two budget, where we first started, this Council first starts investing, that calming tables, there were only nineteen tables installed in the city. Since then, we have installed, I believe, seventy-one permanent tables, um, in addition to that, just in the three and a half years since, um, with more, um, on the way, um, and a, a greater, um, ability to put the temporaries in and then to install the permanents behind. So, just wanna kind of underscore that number and how much this program has grown, um, since these investments were cast.
So, it's not cumulative. This is just the singular. So, there'll be another graph if you added them all together, what we would have.
Correct. Okay. We can show that. I'm not sure that we've prepared that, but yeah, this is year over year what our, what our operations have been year over year.
Are we able to interject? Are we waiting to?
I just wanna emphasize that number, and we'll have plenty of time for this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, sir. All right, so moving to the traffic calming process, just reiterating it, but before I kind of just let you see the streamlined process that we could, that we crafted to make this process a lot quicker, uh, as proposed before, just to give a quick idea of how many requests we receive in traffic calming. Um, so just for twenty twenty-four alone, we received a hundred and fifty requests. This does not include duplicates. This doesn't include those that may be in the county. These are just physical requests that come to our inbox that we screen one by one to make sure that we, uh, direct particular attention, to make sure that we do data collection and, uh, prepare, prepare these reports to be then sent to our traffic calming committee. Then, the main thing is that we keep the residents first. So, this is a resident-driven program, and I definitely don't want that to be missed. We give them the power to, of course, from start to finish, the, this application process starts with them, and then it finishes with them when it comes to implementation. And so, that's something that we're very proud of. We push that forward because we want residents to make sure that they are the forefront of anything that we do on their residential streets, and so, they're part of that approval process. Everything else that you see is stuff that happens behind the scenes with Traffic Engineering Division. We do field inspections, we do the data collection, and we get all of this prepared for our residents, so in that way, they can digest it and see exactly what's happening on their roadways. So, talking about engagement, this is a big, big proponent of Vision Zero. I think of Vision Zero is still fairly new. I know it was adopted in twenty twenty-two, but of course, we still have a lot of work to do to making sure that every resident, that's my goal, every resident of the city of Savannah knows about Vision Zero and the great work that we're doing to keep them safe on our roadways, and that's for all road users. So, as you see here in the pictures, we're touching lives all the way from our children of Savannah, all the way up to our senior citizens, making sure that they have the proper knowledge of how to operate on our roadways and then the kids, being sure that they are trained up in the way that they understand traffic safety. We're also glad to mention that we have kicked off our Savannah Vision Zero Advisory Committee. We are very, very proud of that. This is separate from our internal committee. So, our internal committee is comprised of other internal city departments, also public safety is a part of that as well, but it's Advisory Committee, and these, these names that you see on the board isn't just everybody that we're closing and capping off to. This is open to more stakeholders, and the, the goal is to grow this, uh, but this is just where we're starting, and we're off to such a great start. These stakeholders here have given us so much opportunity to take a closer look at what they deal with day to day as regards to traffic safety and being able to share their resources with them. So, definitely very, very excited. You will be hearing more from these stakeholders. They will be the ones that are helping us make decisions based on, of course, doing data collection and best case practices on our roadways. So, this slide here just, of course, encapsulates just a little bit more of what we're doing behind the scenes as far as engagement. So, big shout out to our communications team. They're making sure that they keep Savannah Vision Zero on the forefront and keeping people informed of what's happening across our streets, showing the impact that we're making when we're going and visiting these community centers. Even you see some pictures of the collaboration that we have with Savannah Police Department, their traffic unit, getting those Savannah Vision Zero decals placed on their traffic unit fleet vehicles, and their partnership in helping us ensure that we're keeping speed limits down across our residential and major collectors, other roadways that have seen speed limit reduction. So, I wanna jump into enforcement. So, enforcement is a big proponent of what we do in traffic engineering, so. So I want to jump into enforcement. So enforcement is a big proponent of what we do in traffic engineering. So one thing that we're very, very proud of, and once again, thank you so much to the council for approving last year, the big undertaking of reducing speed limits on our streets, our residential areas. We know that speed kills and that no resident in Savannah should feel unsafe when they're walking down their streets. They should feel safe when they're walking down the sidewalk or walking their children to the bus stop or walking their animals or pets down to in the closest neighborhood dog park or area to just kind of relax. So enforcement helps us with that. So that bit undertaking of the radar permit, reducing those speed limits across more than 75 residential collector and local streets. We changed over about 400 signs across the city of Savannah. So our team has been doing diligent work to make sure that the residents and also visitors of Savannah are aware of those changes. And of course, we've added some extra school zones. And so we're happy to, of course, enforce that because we want to make sure that our kids are given a safe way, safe route to school and feeling safe when they're leaving, walking back home or catching their buses. So this is more of a PSA piece. This is a most recent PSA that we pushed out through communications department. Of course, enforcement has begun on June 15th for our speed limit reductions. So this is just a reminder to watch those speeds. So traffic safety is a shared responsibility. I want to emphasize shared because that means everyone in this room, everyone that's watching this video, everyone that will watch this in the future. So drivers should obey speed limits and yield to pedestrians and crosswalks. Pedestrians should also use crosswalks and exercise caution before stepping on into the roadway. And cyclists should ride with traffic when, when available and always stay visible. That's just something that we want to push. That's a constant message that is shared with Vision Zero because of course, we're promoting traffic safety first. So jumping into another E, this is an important player in traffic calming for sure, but that's emergency response. So I want to paint the picture of Savannah Fire Medical running the call, making sure that every second counts. This particular patient may be having a stroke or a heart attack. And in those particular situations, every second matters. And so we bring Savannah Fire to the table and making sure that they make decisions on if a particular location of a traffic calming measure will impact their travel time or their response times. And we make sure that's a collaborative approach. So Savannah Fire works with us very closely. We definitely want to give them their kudos and their, our appreciation to them for helping us with the traffic calming program and being sure that they look into every single request that we bring forth to them. So then that way we can keep streets safe, but also not impact their response times at the same time. So next I want to introduce, skip back to the last slide. Next I want to introduce Captain Bradley Beto of Savannah Police Department to talk about some of our collision data.
So good afternoon. I appreciate y'all. Let me have a couple minutes of your time to talk about our collision data. I would like to thank you for your support and your dedication to traffic safety. I've been with the Savannah Police Department going on 27 years. And this is the first time in, in recent history that, that we as a city have taken a holistic approach to trying to keep drivers safe on the roadway. So thank you very much for your, for your collaboration, your efforts into this. We greatly appreciate that. So this is our 2025 collision data. Currently, right now, we are sitting at five fatal wrecks for the year. This is a really low number for us at this point in time of the year. In fact, I was talking with Chief Gunther before we came in here. If we make it through Labor Day weekend, this would be the first summer in known history that we have made it through without anyone dying on our roadways in Savannah. So knock on some wood and hopefully we make it through there. So as, these numbers are as of July 31st. So as of July 31st, we've had 21 serious injuries. Six of those are non-serious injuries that we, that we've adopted and we have 32 TIU investigations. So TIU is our traffic enforcement, traffic investigation unit. We investigate all serious injury or fatal wrecks within the city of Savannah. Our current numbers right now, we're sitting at 25 serious injuries. Now that may seem like it's kind of high. Only two of those are life threatening. We adopted the other ones because they are life altering injuries. So we're going to follow up on those and most of those are prosecutable. So that's what we're doing with those. This is our TIU investigation summary. This kind of breaks it down percentage wise. So 66% of our investigations are serious injury wrecks and the 15% obviously are fatals. And then we have 19% that are non-serious injuries. And this is our collision and injury comparison chart over the past three years since we've adopted Vision Zero. So as you can see, this mouse, try to find it. Give me a second. There it is. So as you can see, we have the, the red bar right here. These are the number of collisions that we have had in 2022. We had 14 collisions resulting in 14 fatal injury or fatal wrecks or 14 injuries. We had 22 serious injury collisions resulting in 27 serious injury claims or victims, as we can call them. And then in 2023, we had a little bit of anomaly right here. We had 19 collisions resulting in 19 deaths and 44 serious injury collisions resulting in 44 serious injury reports. You see the numbers started to drop and this is part of where Vision Zero started to kick in and some other collaborative efforts. Where we went into 2024, we have 14 fatal wrecks resulting in 14 fatal deaths. And then in, we had 21 serious injury collisions with 31 serious injuries reported. And this is where we're sitting at right now at five and five, 21 and 26 total injuries from our wrecks. Looking back at our numbers across the city of injury wrecks that are reported, that are non-serious injury wrecks and just, just of minor injury wrecks. From 2022 to 2024, we are down 22% across the city. That is a tremendous number and I attribute that to our efforts through Vision Zero. I attribute that to driver awareness, public safety campaigns, environmental roadway designs, traffic calming that we have out there and then obviously increased enforcement efforts by my guys over in traffic, which I applaud them for their efforts. And this is just a further breakdown of the last chart that we looked at. In 2022, you can see that we had 14 fatal wrecks, 22 serious injury wrecks. 2023, we had 19 fatal wrecks, 44 serious injury wrecks. And we see it drop off significantly. 14 fatal wrecks with 21 injury wrecks. And then we see it even across the board as of July 2025. So we're, we're starting to trend up right here in serious injury wrecks, but you can see we're trending down significantly in fatal wrecks going into 2025. And this is the amount of injuries reported with each one of those wrecks. So 14 fatal injuries reported for the 14 wrecks, but 27 total injuries, 44 total injuries of serious injury, 19 fatal, or 14 fatal, 31 serious injury reports. And then obviously our five fatals for the year and then 20, sorry, I can't see that, 26 of what we're looking at right now of injuries reported. Obviously, we are trending down. Like I said, we're 22% down across, across the board for all injury wrecks in cities since 2022, all the way to 2024. And I am very, very pleased with our five fatal wrecks that we're sitting on this year. I, I think our efforts are paying off. And once again, that's because everyone in this room, what y'all are doing to support us.
And before we move on, I want to emphasize that Vision Zero, the zero in Vision Zero relates to the zero number of fatalities that we want to see annually. Just to traffic calming. So while we can certainly be very, very proud of the reduction in injury and the reduction of fatalities, five is still 500% more than what we want and what Vision Zero sets out to accomplish. So I want to make sure that we're applauding our success and celebrating that, but keeping our eye on what Vision Zero stands for. So thank you so much, Captain.
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Captain Beto for that. Also jumping into the last two Es, engineering and evaluation. I paired these two together because they go hand in hand. So leading off from the numbers that you saw that Captain Beto presented to us, with every single crash that happens on our Savannah roadways that has serious injuries and fatalities attached to them, we receive an actual report. We receive an email from our traffic investigations unit, straight to our inboxes for us to review based off the investigative reports. As soon as we, as soon as we receive those investigative reports, we do a field assessment. And what I mean by field assessment is that if that particular crash resulted in a close to intersection or on our roadways, we're going out and identifying potential issues to infrastructure and design. And then out of that, we identify potential improvements. So we're doing the work behind the scenes to make sure that we're making changes and that we're potentially identifying problems before they occur. Another project that we are very, very proud of is our lighting the way to safer streets. Many of you remember, we did a installation in the past over at the crossing of Liberty across to the Savannah Civic Center from the Liberty Street Garage. And so that's a lighted crosswalk design. And so we decided to take a different approach, of course, to still pushing lighting and safety. And so at the corner of MLK and West Bay Street, many of you have driven by there recently in the nighttime hours, you see that is a lot brighter and that was on purpose. Of course, this intersection has made itself susceptible to many crashes over the years. And so we took a different approach to making sure that we take note of the crashes that have happened and make a change. And so this was promoting safety. This is a vision zero, part of our vision zero promise. And so this is just a light, one particular area that sees a lot of heavy pedestrian traffic. It also amounts itself to some driver viewer, viewer conflicts when they're seeing pedestrians when turning. And so we want to make sure that we can increase that safety and visibility. This is also coming to other intersections as well. So you'll see this spreading out. We just installed one recently on East Broad in Liberty. And so that one is active. And so we're still taking notes of several other streets that need this type of enhancement and making the necessary adjustments. So next I want to jump into some of our safety projects as it coordinates with our action plan, Savannah Vision Zero Action Plan. So our Safer Streets For All grant that, of course, we were awarded and very, very proud of for 37th Street, which is a high injury network. The data that's been collected, very, very, 15 intersections, spanning across 50 intersections, excuse me, of just a high crash injury network. And so of course, with this particular grant, this is going to allow for us to make various safety enhancements. So some of these planned upgrades may include some crosswalk enhancements, some bicycle lane additions, some updated traffic signals, some vehicle to technology, to V2X technology for our vehicle connectivity. Just a different couple of things that'll span across this whole corridor to improve safety and give a safer mode of transportation for all of our rural users. Another project that we've been working closely in partnership with Georgia Department of Transportation is our Montgomery Street Project. So this is spanning, the parameters are kind of changing. We're still sitting down with them, trying to flesh out some different ideas. But just to kind of give you an area, general consensus of where this safety project is planning to take place. It's going to span somewhere between Thackeray Place and we're trying to see if we can extend it all the way to West Victory Drive. So this would be the same thing, looking at different planned upgrades as far as adding in some raised medians to mitigate some of the crashes that have happened in this particular corridor. Promote that sense of safety by adding bike lanes throughout and improving the sidewalks, creating an actual wider section. So then that way those that decide to walk our bike feel a little bit safer going down Montgomery Street. And this is all going to be funded by GDOT. So we're still in preliminary stages of this and this is just kind of a shared design of just that preliminary section of what we're looking to have done. And so this brings me to the end of the presentation, but one thing that I want to emphasize, of course, from what you all have seen from the beginning of this presentation to now, of course, is thanks to this council, thanks to city manager, thanks to the mayor, thanks to our residents for definitely continuing to push the envelope of traffic safety. But one thing that I definitely want to mention echoing the statements of the city manager is, of course, Vision Zero is focused on zero. So the numbers that we saw, of course, we're happy about them trending down, but think of those numbers as someone that may be related to you. We want to keep that in the forefront. These are all numbers of people that are a part of our community, are visitors that come to visit us. And so we want to ensure that, that we see those numbers go down. We don't want to impact the future of anyone else's families or how they come to Savannah, how they view Savannah based off of the numbers that we see here. So let's keep pushing forward to keep Vision Zero at the forefront. And let's keep making sure that traffic safety is a part of our Vision Zero promise to the city of Savannah. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussions with the council, but also want to know the three logos there on the ending screen. Especially as it comes to traffic calming, the fire department is instrumental in making sure that we can approve and put traffic calming in places where they are still going to be able to respond to calls for emergencies within the four minutes that we, we want to get to everybody. And they've done a really, really wonderful job being a yes partner on traffic calming and not a no partner and finding ways that our apparatus and our engineers can move over those traffic calming devices on the way to save somebody's life while being able to still lay them down. So thank you, Chief Kitchen and your team for that. And of course, Chief Gunther and all of SPD, the traffic unit, Captain Beto on down. It's just amazing work that, that you're doing all over the place and a big partner in Vision Zero. So I want to thank those two chiefs. And with that, I'm happy to have any discussion and answer any question that the council has.
Thank you, city manager. I want to first say thank you to you and Chief, Chief Fay and our traffic engineer who heads up and been doing it for a long, long time. Mr. Henry, thank you so much. Mr. Taylor, you, you bring this freshness of, of traffic calming and we are so appreciative of the residents and our council and mayor, so appreciative of the work. And with seeing you, Chief Beto, believe.
Captain.
Captain.
Captain, yes, sir.
Captain. Beto.
Promoted the mayor, Pro Tem.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your, our presentation on today. Just the, just the collective circle of working together as the city manager has stated is really changing, changing the way traffic calming and Vision Zero is going on in our city. Alderman Leggett and then Alderman Purti.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Harold and Captain Beto. I think the elephant in the room probably going to come from all of us. So where are we now with the sinkholes that's popping up in the city? I'm saying that because we can't actually have an effective Vision Zero unless we start talking about the streets and how they crack.
And they're not part of traffic calming.
I know. They, they are, they calming traffic though.
And great question. And thank you for bringing that up. Sinkholes, let me define the terms a little bit. A sinkhole is something that happens in geology where the earth changes and causes a hole in the surface. A, a cave-in occurs when infrastructure fails. So what we've been seeing lately are cave-ins on our streets because of the immense amount of rain that has fallen this summer, has washed away under sections of some of our roadways and has made those roadways weak. And when heavy vehicles move over them, they fail. Unfortunately, sometimes we can only know about a weak spot in our roadways only when they fail. The, so cave-ins are something that unfortunately exist, especially exist in places that have a lot of rainwater like we do. And we were looking into all of the, kind of the cave-in numbers in history that we've had since we've been kind of collecting data. And I'm going to share that with council as soon as we're done collecting that data. One of the big things that we have done lately to try to speed up the response to cave-ins and other type of utility cuts which impact our roadway is doing better coordination and contract coordination between our water resources and utility departments and traffic and street maintenance. A lot of the repairs that are happening in our streets aren't happening by street maintenance. They're happening actually by our utilities and water resources because we're having to get down into our stormwater pipes or to our water and sewer pipes to make repairs there and we have to cut into the streets. That's, the same is true with cave-ins. A lot of the times those cave-ins are due to stormwater infrastructure that has been kind of overtaken by the water. I mean, it washes out the roadway underneath it and then you've got a weak point in the road where I was, you know, shared a picture of a few years ago where we had a street sweeper, you know, Savannah sweep, we were falling to a cave-in as well. When you see those heavy vehicles. So that coordination is going to help as well as I know council is continuing to consider. And we're bringing more information back in a couple of months related to a stormwater. and we're bringing more information back in a couple of months related to a stormwater utility which is going to provide, which could provide steady revenue and capital programming in order to keep our stormwater system better maintained, upgraded and expanded in order to handle the rainwater that we're seeing and will see in the future.
Harold, on that dashboard that you have is nice also. Do we have any alternative locations able to be on that, on that slide? Because I see a couple of places that's missing on Park Avenue between Atlantic and Paulson, that's missing. And a couple of other places that the resident has sent in some, some requests. I don't see them on the map.
The traffic calming portal?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So we can make those changes, like I said, steadily changing. So those may be forthcoming just based off the data that we're collecting, making sure we have rules across the board from fire and also from traffic calming.
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we, we were asking about the traffic calming, the devices. And we had a problem with supply chain. Are we up to par now?
Yes, so, yes, for approvals of some of our budgets and some of our contract modifications, we have been able to resource ourselves with more tables that we can install. So we have ordered extra pieces so then that way we can deploy more tables at the same time. Only things that we face now in the field is just making sure we make the pieces, the tables wider or more narrow. So that's why we made the decision to order more pieces.
Process has become more streamlined, is better for the residents and the public to put in for traffic calming devices?
Yes, and that's something that we've definitely been majorly focused on is making sure we keep it simple. That way the resident is focused in the beginning. We do all the heavy lifting in the backend and then we represent it to them once we have the design completed, once fire has approved for that location and then implementation. So we try to keep it within a pretty quick time. It does take time, but we try to keep it within a very streamlined process to where it keeps everything moving forward in a hastily manner.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, is it possible, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, for us to, I guess we take a tour through our neighborhood associations to have Harold and their team of Chief Damasimo to come through and help the residents more realize the better streamlined process with having the traffic calming devices?
Yes, sir. Alderman, I think that's absolutely what our goal is here. I know that Harold is out in neighborhood associations all the time and in conjunction with Lita Coleman and our neighborhood liaisons who are also trained up on helping neighborhood associations move through the traffic calming committee process. So happy to, to work with you and other members of council on where you want to see us next in the neighborhoods. We're happy to do that.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman Perte.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's, I thought it was a year ago, but maybe it's been two years since I stood up and gave my very fiery speech about traffic calming. I'm glad I don't have to do that today. I'm actually quite impressed on what I'm seeing. I know there's still some work to do, but I think we're moving in the right direction. I'm glad that there is a citizen-driven approach that allows citizens and community members to take ownership of this process. So let me ask this question. I've got some more comments and a couple of questions to ask, but for this question, when a person submits a, an assessment, how long does that take before we see some sort of action behind it?
So as soon as the application comes through, the first thing that traffic engineering does is does what we call a staff report. And so we analyze and look at a particular location, whether we use sage just layer or we go out in the field and we see if it qualifies based on certain modifiers such as street length, street width, if it has interconnectivity and if the speed limit requirements are also met. So that's the first step, that's pretty immediate. So that's within a couple of weeks just based on the amount of requests that we receive. So then just kind of give you the backstory of where it goes past then. Then it's set up for what we call a data collection. So data collection, we're resourced to do in-house. We're looking at ways that we can also even streamline that process a little bit more through other technologies to help us out. But right now we send out an engineer to lay out what we call road tubes. You've probably seen them around town that you ride over that collects speed and also volume data. Makes it digestible in the sense that shows us the eighty-fifth percentile. The eighty-fifth percentile is the eighty-five percent of vehicles that's traveled over those tubes, the rate of speed that they were going. And then that report is also shared with the resident that applied. So it gives them a quick snapshot of exactly what's been happening on the streets. From there, Traffic Calming Committee, which we have different members that's been appointed, of course, by council, they are the ones that look at that staff report that we prepare based off of the particular stipulations that need to be met. And then also look at the speed data analysis, which is that eighty-fifth percentile and also the amount of vehicles that's on those roadways. As long as it meets those thresholds, they may approve or deny based on other modifiers and then we push it straight on through the process from there. So it kind of keeps going in line. The one thing that I do want to mention is that when you go back and look at the numbers of traffic calming installations that we have done, last year we were projected to do more. The only thing that we ran into is being that this is a resident-driven initiative. We have some opposition and that's fair. We want to keep the resident informed and at the forefront of traffic calming. So a lot of times people may want traffic calming in their neighborhoods, but they may just not want it in front of their particular property. And so sometimes we run into those issues to where we may, and we don't just end it there. We always try and figure out a different way that we can maybe shift it to the neighbors. Maybe they may be more in support of that table. But sometimes we have to take that and null and void that particular project just because we can't find the location. So I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that. But the process, each step through it hits the resident almost two to three times to make sure that we are insured that they are in support of that particular device before we get to the finish line.
Appreciate all of us if I could, which is something that Harold kind of said, is that not every place is suitable for a traffic calming device. It has to meet certain requirements from a traffic engineering standpoint to be suitable. So that where we may see residents who really want a traffic calming device in a certain place, it may not be engineer, engineerally feasible to be able to or recommended to put a traffic calming device there.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And I will say this, this process for traffic calming is a shared responsibility between devices, enforcement and design of the roadway. And of course, where we can't have the devices, we need more enforcement. Where, where we can, we should be able to design a roadway or design a street in a manner that allows for safe pedestrian crossing, that allows for the flow of traffic, but at the same time, safe speeds. Something else I was thinking about and I know that we just, it's hard because it's hard to keep fully staffed at a police department anywhere right now in this area, speaking from personal experience too. But some things that, that I've noticed with, with traffic calming lately, we have a lot more speeders on the roads. And it just seems to me that with the growth and the development in our area, we're seeing a lot more traffic, a lot more cars on the roadway. As I see cars coming into the south gateway of the city, which is Abercorn and Two Oh Four, I'm seeing people come down Two Oh Four Extension into the city at speeds of about seventy-five, seventy, seventy-five miles an hour. And then they're coming right into a forty-five mile an hour zone. Our traffic folks from Savannah PD are working diligently in that area. But that's, they can get to it when they get to it. They have to service the entire city. We need to start thinking in terms, how can we spread that resource around or add to that resource at this point? Because we need more traffic officers or, you know, we need to be able to give our officers the tools to be able to handle that when they're not responding call to call. Because there are times where they could be doing that when they're not responding to those calls. The other thing is, and I would think this, I'm sure I'll probably ruffle feathers when I say this, but people speed in the area and they don't stop for police because they know they can. It's about changing that behavior and it's about when they run from the police, they just, they keep running because they know that we're not going to stop them depending on the type of circumstance it is. Our neighboring, one of our neighboring jurisdictions just were able to purchase a device to put on the front of their patrol cars to slow vehicles down or stop a pursuit immediately when it starts. And oftentimes we know that when these cars are speeding and they're, they're breaking these basic traffic laws and they don't stop for police, it's oftentimes because they have a gun in the car. They've committed a crime. There's something linking them to something higher than that traffic stop that would, that would necessitate some further action. So I think we need to start thinking in terms, when it comes to policy and procedure, in terms of allowing some of these officers and allowing the department to do what they need to do to be able to enforce the law and make us safer. I, I know the statistics on, on police chases, I know the statistics on that stuff. I'm, I help write policy on that stuff. But when we are seeing this trend in our city, we can't policy ourself to death and tire officers' hands from doing their job. So I think we have to be a little creative in order to help our folks be able to do that and to keep our streets safer. So please look into that.
What's that device that you were?
The grappler.
The grappler?
Yep. The other thing I will ask is if we can get a monthly traffic calming report that will go out to all city council members so that we are aware of what's been installed, what's coming, what's on the horizon and areas that may be of concern.
We'll absolutely do that.
Yeah, that'd be in conjunction with the map, we would definitely make sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mel, there I will. Nothing changes behavior like a traffic ticket. And so to that end, I think that law enforcement officers have to make a judgment call about what's the most important thing at that moment. You know, we, we entrust them with that ability. But we also have had resources coming here. Georgia State Patrol loves being here. Matter of fact, yesterday I just saw one sitting on the Geechee Road right at Five Sixteen and Thirty Seventh Street. I mean, he was catching them as soon as they hit that curve. I mean, he was right there, you couldn't get, matter of fact, I was concerned that they would cause a crash because they were just, and I mean, he just had him. And, you know, and so I think, you know, bringing those folks in, I mean, that's what they do, that's what they do best. They enjoy doing it. And I think for us, you know, people don't like it. When I get the calls about people getting tickets, was it us? No, State Patrol, well, that's State Patrol. The Sheriff's Department has significantly upgraded in their traffic enforcement, interdiction units. I think, yeah.
Road runners.
Yeah, I mean, so I think that, that helps us as well to be able to address. But I agree with Alderman Perte. I mean, you know, it depends just how far you want to go into, to that. Because we want to stop, we don't want to chase, we don't. But then again, we have to make sure that people remain safe because there is a legal responsibility we take on when we do that. The second thing I wanted to just lift, and I don't know if I had to step out, and Harold, thank you, it's a great job, sir, is I hoped that we would create as a baseline to get to one day, the founding statement that around every school and every park in our city, there should be traffic calming devices. I mean, everywhere else is everywhere else, but I mean, we know where kids congregate and we know where they hang out. And so I think hopefully we can get to the point beyond the other stuff that people just know that you can't speed around a park, you can't speed in the vicinity of a school. And as a founding principle that we can get to the point where we can say every, you know, one day that every park, every city park or amenity, community center or school that we have traffic calming devices around them for places that allow it.
Yes, sir, and I've heard that from council. It's something that we're working on for the twenty-six budget and an initiative that we're working to include in Savannah GPS.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I know it'll take some time to get there, but you know, it is, it is something we can reach. You know, we can probably determine when we reach there, obviously, volume, I mean, I think in this case it's very scientific. And the other thing was dealing with the, the sinkhole and they've become much more prevalent around the country. The weather conditions, the amount of rain, I think you're right, you know, in terms of the rain that ground has just been taking, is shifting, a whole bunch of stuff. I did not know whether there was anything out in the technological world that could just randomly test the, the stability of ground underneath that could predictively, you know, say that, hey, this ground has shifted or this ground is weak or the stability of this ground is questionable, that we might be able to predict those before they happen. I don't know if technology's out there, but.
We're aware of some features and looking into those pretty aggressively.
There's a sonar system that predicts pocketing in certain areas.
Just ride it around, I mean, because, you know, it's not, it would not be unreasonable to think that it won't happen again. We have just received that much rain and I mean, this rain has to go somewhere. And the fact is, you know, being a New Yorker, I'm familiar with potholes because it snows and you put snow on and you put the salt on and then after a while it just, it gives away. And so with this much rain, I mean, I just, you know, and you just really don't know when or where or how it's going to happen, you know. A car probably could have rolled across and been fine that day at that moment. And then a bus, which is a heavier capacity vehicle, is an issue, so.
Yes, sir. It's a, it's a symptom of the rain, it's a symptom of infrastructure that needs to be improved and updated. And it also is a, that we've got to be able to invest in the technologies to help us be more proactive. And so we're working on the proactive piece. We're also working on making sure that we're better reactively when those sink-ins and cave-ins happen, that we can repair the roads.
Well, I appreciate, and just to the team, I appreciate y'all's response to it. I think it was, it was comprehensive and the communication of it. So I just think, you know, in those cases, I mean, I think you did what you do. So to all of y'all involved, thank you for that. Alderman Palumbo.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you staff so much for your presentation. I wanted to echo the sentiments of the table of a remarkable and very thoughtful presentation. Even the presentation itself, the graphic design, the testimonials, going above and beyond to really share those stories. And that's what it's all about is making residents happy, keeping them safe. And it's encouraging to see the affirmation that the investments are working to save lives. And so that brings the new challenge of, you know, I think that you're ready to have more resources to be able to do more, right? It's, it's going to get more difficult as it goes along because it is so comprehensive and, and can be expensive. Anytime that you hit a shovel into the street, I think you add another digit, you know, to the end, the cost of the project. But it's encouraging to see that the implements that are there are working. I would like to see, of course, more of them in citywide to keep up that momentum, getting more people involved. And then for the, for the next update next year, or whenever we get the next one, begin integrating things like, you know, crosswalk expansions and crosswalk counts. I know you guys have done a lot of work on those tactically and comprehensively. Marrying together the sidewalk expansions that we've had or our new construction where that's been implemented to see what kind of difference is that making in the data. And then, and then trying to get more on what I call the supply side mobility. Of, I know that we've got some big ticket items headed up for SPOLOST for mobility improvements and bike lanes and sidewalk infrastructure and much, much more. Being able to measure the before and after, seeing that difference that it makes in saving lives is an important test case for twenty twenty-five and well into the future. And then the last thing too, I mean, I love to see, you know, that you're adding more and more and more, recognizing that lighting and visibility is important, how people engage with the street. And the last thing I wanted to highlight is a little unusual. I think something working in our favor are the temporary, temporary traffic calming measures that we have in the city right now. And that's new construction, drainage implements, that we have street closers. We have a lot of shovels hitting the ground in Savannah and I think that that's made a difference in the data as well. And that I want to make sure that we don't get caught up and say, all right, job well done and then move to the next, and then the, the data pops back up. It's all comprehensively helping in the same direction. But I think that the, it's great improvement to see and I would love to see you guys get more resources well into the future to, to let it scale and let it keep growing.
Alderman Bell?
Just curious, thank you for your presentation. In the process down under Resident Action, Resident Action, yeah. I was curious as to whether or not you require a certain percentage of neighbors and of the residents in a block or whatever to sign on or to agree to install even a temporary device?
Yes, ma'am, so that's a great question. So for the temporary devices, what we do is we do the data collection, we make the plan. And then on our end, to speed up that process, that's when we implement that just by traffic engineering standards because it's a test and trial period. So it's the same thing as if we make any infrastructure improvements, we do temporary additions of those first to see if they work. And then the resident side, we do have a certain percentage that we have to meet. So let's just say we have four residents or five residents that's impacted by that particular device. Before we move to permanence, we have to have fifty percent plus one. Yes, ma'am.
It's back in the day, I remember during the early days of traffic calming devices, I know there were moments when, there were times when even.
I know there were moments when, or there were times when even a temporary device was installed and the neighbor or the residence found that they were inconvenienced and then they wanted it removed. So do you experience much of that now?
No, we haven't had many appeals. I don't think we have any appeals since I've been with the department. Only thing that we have is opposition as far as placement of that table.
Placement, not in front of my house.
Correct, correct.
Let me ask you a question before I get to Linda. And I think, Mr. Mayor, I think this is a great opportunity to start. We've talked about dashboarding. The information is right there. Okay, that's something we can put, you know, just create the dashboard so that in addition to the reports sent to council, this is something that's easily, we have a Vision Zero page that we can just...
Yes, sir.
Okay, I mean...
And the map, as Harold discusses beta form, and we're sharing it with you for the first time. But when it's set to go live a month from now, it's going to be open to the public and will include information and data and statistics there. But it's, it's a map that they can go in real time, see where traffic calming devices and Vision Zero improvements have been made or are planned to be made.
Just the investment since 2022, you know, I mean, it's pretty significant. So we want to make sure that information is out there. Thank you. Aldo and Mel, welcome.
Good morning. Please tell me your name. I didn't hear it.
Harold Taylor.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your presentation. The missing piece for me, if you live on an arterial street, the final process has to be approved by the fire department.
Correct.
And so I would want him to be inserted in there because a lot of the people who want traffic calming is because they live basically and are connected to arterial streets. So that's a no for them. And so is that part, you just got to send us in, is that part of the application that you tell people from the beginning so they don't go through that process? Do you cut it off there? Or do you complete the whole thing and then tell them it is because of this reason, you know, even if we had the budget and we came to it?
Right. No, great question. So in the beginning, we actually mitigate that. So if they do live on a arterial major collector roadway, in the first part, when they send in the application, soon as we do our staff report, we let them know immediately. So it's within probably a week or two weeks that they know if that street initially qualifies. That's a part of the process that we've included. So in that way, we don't have people that are waiting until that finish line piece just to be told no.
And the other piece, the application process, basically it's a money thing. If it's not in the budget, then they're not going to get that process. Do you initiate that process anyway? Because I tell my people to go ahead. Should we get some money? I'll try to fight and get that. So knowing that, what is the gap between the application until the implementation? How do you gauge that without telling people, okay, hurry up and then wait? Because people become frustrated, and we want to make sure that we tell them, while we want you to follow this process, we can assure that you're going to be getting this money in a timely fashion. Please answer that question.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So now when it comes to the money part, I will say that I don't have much restriction when it comes to budget as far as getting traffic calming placed in our neighborhoods. That's priority for us.
Is that part of the conversation to say, we're going to take this application, right? And we're going to make sure that we do from my department. The other main issue is, while you're following that from the application to the implementation, I can't assure you that you're going to get it two years, three years, whatever, depending on, you know, the budget. Is that a part of the strong part of the process? Do your people convey that?
Right, yes, ma'am. So we do start telling people, especially when they call us and they reach out to us, that it can take over a year before you start seeing some progression, just because of the steps, even though it's streamlined, it does take time. And like I spoke to before, being that we keep it resident-driven and resident-focused, we have to have buffers in there. When we send out letters, we don't, of course, want to send it out maybe multiple times before we decide, okay, that's a yes or a no, depending on no answer. So we tell them that there's going to be some time before you start seeing forward progression, before you start seeing those shovels tilling dirt or turning dirt before the implementation process.
So the only final question that I have, we all know from personal experience, when we put the traffic, the permanent one, then what happens is, and I hear, thank you for the presentation, I hear your strategic plan is very clear, right? But tell me what your strategy is to combat when you put it on that street and then that traffic is then relegated to the streets on either side. What is your strategy in combating that? How do we tell our, you know, what is that conversation with the residents?
Right. No, great question. So what we do is we take and analyze where that traffic is going. And that's basically pushed off of what the amount of applications that we get. So for instance, I use, for example, in District One, Spring Lake's neighborhood is on our desk right now for a neighborhood plan. And that's based off of the amount of requests that we receive. So within that particular neighborhood, we saw that there were some discrepancies, not really discrepancies, but some issues as far as driveway impacts or stormwater utilities. So we can't necessarily go into that neighborhood and place traffic calming measures. What we're resources do right now, which is the speed tables, we wouldn't be successful in doing that. So what we're doing is getting with our particular, our project manager that we have in-house and looking at creating a plan that's outside the means of just speed tables. Because of course, traffic calming includes other measures than just the tables themselves. And so that's things that we're looking at as far as strategy. So of course, our goal isn't to just push traffic to another area, but the... Right, right. And so we take that data, and so that helps us figure out where do we stop? Where do we stop the traffic before it starts funneling into other areas and creating problems elsewhere? So we're getting back into that neighborhood plan approach, just based on what the data shows us. So in that way, we don't have tables just kind of haphazardly on every street, but we're mitigating the problem at the same time.
Okay, when we initiated the cameras and the carsons around the schools, to piggyback on what the mayor said, I actually got two tickets and you cannot get your driver's license, I'm going to not the driver's, your tags without getting that. Didn't know that. But what I'm asking you, is it harder to get approval for that type of mitigation from the state legislature as opposed to finding, funding to put the traffic calming in? And so working smarter, have we compared the apples to oranges to see in those high intense dense areas? Can we just put those cameras up? Because nothing really, like the mayor says, and I assure you that everybody is agreeing, is hitting somebody's pocket. What would be the easiest route?
I'll start and let Harold follow up from his expertise. Currently, the state only allows speed cameras to be in school zones.
I get that.
Yeah, and we, and I think that you can, yes, we can petition that. And I think you see in other jurisdictions where speed zone cameras are allowed in more places that you see an impact on speed and behavior because, like you and the mayor said, nothing changes behavior like a big fat speeding ticket. Of course, there are folks who don't like speeding cameras, and that's understandable. But I think that we've continued to talk to the state about our success with speed zone cameras and the results that we see around school zones when those cameras are on.
So, 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 before you say that, who's going to be handling our aids and issues with our state legislature? Is Mr. Sheerhouse still going to be doing that or?
Well, Chief Sheerhouse is absolutely going to be help leading our intergovernmental affairs.
I absolutely appreciate that.
Yeah, but we, and we're, we're going to hire him some help, obviously, because he's been promoted. And so the intergovernmental affairs director, Joe and I will be very engaged.
So one other question, when we talk about what we want our items to be presented to our legislature, might that be something that we could add or at least have further discussion to see?
If council wants to include that on our legislative agenda, absolutely. And I know Joe will be sending out very soon, as we're kicking off our legislative agenda process that's driven by you all, that that's absolutely something that we can work on. And Joe, let me just ask you to get with Aldo and Mel at some point today to talk about that request so we can make sure that we have it flagged.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your presentation and your answers. Thank you.
Just a quick point to that. There was actually a significant movement in the legislature this year, Joe. There are some folks trying to get rid of them totally.
Yeah.
And I don't think, it didn't cross over, did it?
No, it was close.
Right, it was really close. So I just think that we want to keep our eyes on that as well because, you know, there was, there was movement on there that we were watching throughout the session. Aldo and Mel, Miller Blakely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Harold Taylor, thank you for your presentation. And I'm very pleased to note that there were only five fatalities this year. Can you tell me where those fatalities were located? Do you know? I would like to know where they were located. Also, lighting improvements in the city. You mentioned MLK, East Broad Street. What about, that's downtown area. My concern is more south side, more east side, in the neighborhoods. What do we have scheduled for those areas?
Let me take that, and I'll let him add on to it. We are in the process now of trying to finalize an agreement with Georgia Power for a Light Up Savannah initiative. Georgia Power owns and maintains, let me give some broad numbers. There are roughly about 30,000 streetlights in Savannah, in the city limits. About 27,000 or so are owned and maintained by Georgia Power. 3,000 are owned and maintained by the city. Most of those are in the kind of the historic older parts of town. The, the work that we're trying to do with Georgia Power is, one, trying to transition some of those city-owned lighting fixtures over to Georgia Power, who can do a better job of maintaining them, especially in places that we don't have a wheelhouse, like over our interstates and things like that. But it's also going to provide some unit costs that would be advantageous for the city to go through and neighborhood by neighborhood be able to invest in lighting upgrades in all, everywhere in the city. Now, it certainly costs money, but it's, this is where we want to get to, so that we're able to have a system and a program in place to invest in lighting upgrades where we want to see lighting upgrades. The, you know, there's going to be neighbors who, you know, don't want to see the lumens get any bigger or brighter. There's going to be some folks who, you know, want to see the lumens much, much brighter than they can get. But we want to be able to have an ability to work with Georgia Power to be able to upgrade lighting across the area. You can see a similar program in Light Up Atlanta that was started a few years ago. And Atlanta has kind of incrementally invested in, in new neighborhoods where they want to see lighting upgrades happen. And that's the place that we are trying to get to as well.
So you say you've been speaking with Georgia Power. How long have you been speaking with them?
Well, we're...
And how long will this process take?
Well, we're hoping to bring, to bring an agreement to council very soon. We're in the last stages of negotiating this agreement. It's been, it's been a long road. But we're kind of here at the finish line. So we've got another meeting with them, I believe, next week. And so hopefully, we'll, we'll be getting to some resolution. Light Up Savannah is an initiative that this council approved as a SPOST eight list. You'll also be considering today a budget amendment, which moves some SPOST $6 that was, that we have in lighting to be moving towards these kind of lighting upgrade programs as well.
And where would those locations be?
I will get that to you at 2:00 P.M.
I really would like to know because I'm just concerned. We do a lot of traffic calming and lighting up the city and what have you, but it's not in certain areas. And I would like to see those areas that it's not in begin to be in those areas. Okay?
Understood. I think as we get this process going, then council can able to direct funding towards places that they want to see lighting upgraded. And we're going, can do an enormous amount of data and overlay to show, you know, where we don't see as much lighting and where we see, you know, other factors that maybe lighting may assist with, whether that's traffic, whether that's crime, what have you, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to also thank the advisory committee members who are working with us externally. I just want to let them know that we appreciate, appreciate them along with our, our internal committee that is working. I also wrote down a note, as Aldo and Blakely just mentioned, in talking about spreading our resources from the downtown area throughout the other five districts so that everybody can benefit from the resources. The traffic calming has, as you all have shown, has gone from a small amount of traffic calming to just having this whole department working on us and working with us. And just our constituents are very, very pleased with what they're seeing. I want to also thank our, our committee that, what is it, Traffic Calming Committee, that worked real hard with the city and listening to the concerns that come to your department. And they get in the groups and decide on where these traffic calming devices are going. So I want to commend them and their time with the traffic calming committees. The last thing is the enforcement, the slide on the enforcement. You said that there were 400 signs that were changed out, and I would assume you're talking about the speeding signs.
Correct. Speed limit changes now.
And how do we, how do we change the behavior? When folks are, they've been breaking the law, you know, already with doing 50 miles an hour in a 25 zone, but changing these signs and bringing it down, how do we get a grasp on the changing of behavior? I know tickets, because, you know, tickets really change my behavior. If I just get one, that's all it takes for me. And it's there for, for the rest of my life in a, in a place where I get a ticket. So I got, you know, one of those tickets in the speed zone, in the school zone, and I have zero problem in slowing down in that, in that school zone. So we don't have to talk about it now, but I just want to put that on, in the middle of the table. Just how do we continue to change the behavior as we are changing these signs out and lowering the, the speed zones? Thank you all so much. This is just an excellent presentation today and worthy for our constituents to know what Mayor Council, along with Team Savannah, is doing in reference to their request of traffic calming. Thank you.
All right, Aldo and Mel, and then we're going to wrap up.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor, thank you for your presentation. Good job with that. When you, you spoke about equity when you started up. And, and this says that increased equity, so it's a process and we're working on that. But do understand that we haven't achieved the equity. We've achieved some equality in that every district has traffic calming. But if we start talking about how much, then we look at the equity numbers and let's gauge that. Because when I got elected for the first district, you all remember me saying often, we had zero, zero traffic calming devices in the first district. And I heard you say in your presentation, the number, the increase was like 71 or something like that. And so that's interesting and that's good because we have achieved placing some of those in the first district. You had Ms. Deloche up from Cloverdale. And in that instance, on Cloverdale Drive, there was a lot of speeding, mostly local folks, residents. And you placed those devices there, including the artwork. And then they stopped taking Cloverdale Drive and it took Bel Air to circumvent Cloverdale Drive. So she lives on Bel Air. Of course, it's a lot of elderly people in there, and they pushed hard to get that balance in there. So Cloverdale has some, there are some other areas in there that they would like to have some traffic calm, but it's a process. Kyler Brownsville was the first, first district neighborhood to receive some. We had that large investment from that nonprofit. And so everyone was looking at there, so we had to do something there. And Carver Village, folks were very vocal in, about that back street. Well, we have some over there, and they're still asking for some more streets. So every area. But the areas I'm hearing...
and they're still asking for some more streets. So every area, but the areas, I'm hearing a lot of requests and complaints from Tremont Park, Woodville, Hudson Hill, West Savannah. And these requests were made since 2020, and they haven't been addressed. We have, we've had some speed limit decrease, and, and that's good. I have a question about that, too. But these other neighborhoods, and, and we had a situation where, in the beginning, there was a practice at one time where all the people, elected people, your aldermen, could request traffic calming. And obviously, all over the city, you see all that traffic calming. So I'm sure that worked for them then. And then it changed where it had to be the neighborhood presidents requesting the traffic calming devices. And that changed again to the residents who live in that particular street or block. So it was almost like the book Who Moved My Cheese? You know, every time we tried to achieve acquiring some traffic calming in certain areas, the process changed. So what I'm hearing does not reflect what I'm hearing here, what I'm, what I'm hearing out there. And I think we have just as much or more contact with citizens than, than you all. However, my testimony and what I'm hearing, the testimonies I'm hearing from my constituents constantly, you know how much I come to you about these issues on traffic calming all the time. It's not what I'm hearing in here. It's just like night and day. But I know it's a process, and we're talking equity. So we need to look in those areas and make sure that we try to achieve some, some equity there. So.
If I could make a suggestion there that I'd like to have, and I know we're working on, but our neighborhood liaison teams, again, to the, kind of the question that Alderman Leggett had, there are some neighborhoods specifically where we need to provide some support and technical assistance in moving the process forward. I think that's a, would be a very, very useful job for our neighborhood liaison team in coordination with Harold and his team.
And that, and that was my next point, communication and education in those areas. If the process has changed and it's working for other people now, let's make sure that these people who've been trying to get something done for the last five years, make sure they get that, that latest information.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that.
It's been years.
And on, on a couple of particular areas I wanted to talk about, on West Bay Street, hmm, when did I write that letter? I don't know. It was around 2008 or so because we have been trying to get a traffic light. And I know that's a state road at West Bay and Tooton Street. And what they did, they installed a beacon light, and that's not working. I have so many pictures in my phone, and you could stand there at any time and see these people running through that beacon light. Some people just refuse to stop, and some doesn't understand, once it start blinking, you should walk. They sent me some flyers from the DOT to teach the people how to cross with the beacon light. So they supposed, when the, when it stops being solid red and it starts blinking, the traffic is able to go if it's clear. So it's a lot going into that. And people don't know, they don't have a clue. Most, we got people running it every day, and people are walking in the crosswalk. Now, around on Louisville Road, we getting a traffic light there, and it's built in. I mean, the, the operation, the people aren't in the dorms yet, the, they just got the road for the port, and already they got a light. And it's, nobody even walking in there every day. Will be, I'm sure. But we installing a light anticipating high pedestrian traffic and high truck traffic. But we got people around here getting killed, and what was one of the highest corridors in the state and asked for a light and couldn't get one. So the preference, the preference is still a traffic light at that corner because the beacon light is trying to force people towards the stores. And everyone, they're not going to the store. They just want to cross the street at the corner and go to someone's house or wherever they're going. This is a high foot traffic area. I just wanted to mention that so we could pay that a little attention. And then we talked about on West Boundary by Garrison School. I know everyone knows a huge problem there, and we haven't done anything there. You know, it's, it's a problem that's connected to the school when they take in and take out, but it's still a problem when you have parents sitting in the lane of traffic, blocking traffic for 45 minutes to an hour, when trucks and traffic and everything, everything stops. From Gwinnett Street all the way up West Boundary, everything just stopped. You just can't get through there, period.
MLK, too.
So we, okay, so we got to do something about that. Please.
Yep. We're working with the school system.
Okay. We, I don't know, we could figure that out, I'm sure. It's bad. About the cave-in and the sinkholes. Oh, let me ask another question. About the application and the changing of the process, what they're asking me is now that the speed limits have decreased, do they have to go back and reapply for the application? Because some of the applications were turned down because the speed limit was too high? And what's now that it meets the qualification now? And so that was one question that I keep getting from residents. Do they have to reapply?
Right. No, and that's a great point because we have gotten those from different districts as well. And so we do actually, if they're a current protester, and we haven't gotten around to them yet, we are making sure that we take care of that. But then for those that would have been within that year, we'll go back if it's brought to our attention and, of course, make those adjustments. But if it's been past a year, our policy states that once you've hit a year, then you can reapply. So in that way, you can be voted on if traffic calming is deemed necessary for that particular street segment or not.
Make sure that's a part of the education when you're going out to the neighborhoods that they understand that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And about the cave-ins, sinkhole situation, and Jay, you mentioned these vulnerable infrastructure, and we need to improve and update those, and we all know that. But I just want to bring something to y'all's attention to watch and to think about it because it is my lived experience. You know, I often tell you about the history of the area when the International Paper Union Camp company came, and, and our parents tell us that we had fresh springs all through the area, and they dried up once they dug their well. All of the freshwater springs dried up. Well, about a year and a half ago, we start seeing all of this water coming up out of the ground that I shared with you, including a lot of oily different substances. And we're looking at this, wondering where's this water coming from? Where, what is this substance? We know we have a lot of toxins in the environment on the west side. Well, it's interesting that the increase of the water and it's coming, it's synonymous with the IP plant shutting down and not pumping anymore. So is the water that they're not extracting coming back to where it was naturally? And so I'm wondering that because it's synonymous. It's all happening at the same time. And, and how we could manage that, I don't know because these are freshwater springs came from the aquifer, and, and maybe this coming back, I don't know. But we're wondering where that water's coming from. And it's a thought. It's just happening at the same time. When they stop pumping, then the water start coming back up through these, through these areas.
We're doing a lot of number crunching and running on what the international paper closure means to the water system, et cetera. And they do have the groundwater permit as well. And so that's, we'll add this freshwater spring history to some of our, our investigation.
I need to go over to Jasper Spring and see if I see some, because I'm looking all around. And the last thing, you, you mentioned Liberty and East Broad, and you're, maybe you have something there. You're planning maybe to bring some more lighting or whatever. Is that one of your high crash areas?
Yeah. So all of the lighting improvements that we have made are based off of crash history, or we have had near misses with our pedestrians as well.
Because my observation is that a lot of the downtown pedestrian traffic, whether it's tourists or students, their behavior have changed. If you're a person who've been driving in this area for 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years, the, the behavior have changed where it could be electronic devices, whatever, I don't know. It could be, it's attitude to, you know, like, you better stop. But a car will still, they don't have rubber bumpers. So, so maybe the education piece could extend to tourists and students, people who frequent downtown because they're just stepping off these curbs, just walking in front of these cars. And, 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 and at the same time, we see an increase.
Right.
So I think there's some more education we could do.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, that's...
One thing I wanted to add to that, that I think is important is we got an update coming to our Vision Zero Plan. And part of that is something that we talked about is an education piece that wasn't necessarily as robustly developed in the last plan, but we have an opportunity to be able to have that to do. So that is around all kinds of behavioral issues, driver behavior issues, distracted driving, I mean, parent driving. Same with folks who are...
Walking and driving.
To develop a piece around that to help us influence that for safety as well, and that's the individual piece.
And that's great because when I see that one on Duran, when you're approaching, say you're traveling westward and you see that sign to your left when you're approaching every corner that says, you know, stop distracted driving or put your phones down, it, it impacts me because it make me put, you know, my phone down. But so, it works, it works, it works.
You don't have your phone now.
No, no, I wouldn't dare.
I would love to see, um, I don't care how I say this, just I'll get myself in trouble. But they, they, you know, like, walking while distracted. I mean, I could tell you how many times, particularly on Bay, Liberty, Algarth. I mean, people just kind of walk out into the crosswalk because they're in their phone. I mean, just walking in their phone, and it's like, they didn't look, they just come walking straight out. And I'll just leave it like that, you know.
That's very true. I think that the truth of this is, is that a pedestrian is going to hurt a car much less than a car is going to hurt a pedestrian. And that we can, that there's, we've got controls around how we can move vehicles. So I think you see a lot of focus around that, but certainly the education around pedestrian safety is key on that as well. And if I could just, as a moment of pride, just thank and celebrate Harold Taylor Jr., who's done a phenomenal job.
Yes, Harold!
As our transportation coordinator and as a true, a true leader and expert in his field. And he was, he was a member of the first cohort, the City Managers Emerging Leaders Program. He was actually my mentee, and I learned way more from Harold than he learned from me, I know.
Shameless plug. Shameless.
He's done a, he took a new job and has really transformed this work.
One other thing, I think in the last presentation, we were told, I believe it was 13 or nine, and I had three tentative ones. On the map, I see that, that, that is one in the third district. Are you moving forward with that so that I can tell them? Because you did have a list that you were going to push out because they had funding. Can I confirm that?
Yeah, if, if, I'll get with you personally so we can figure out which street segment you're talking about.
This is Parkway.
Parkway, yes, ma'am. So we are. That is correct. We're waiting on, yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that.
All right. Go ahead and execute the hard stop. We got 30 minutes. So no executive session. We'll see you all at 2:00.
Foods upstairs.
Upstairs. Basically hosting lunch for the council.
We got one more.